I can't see the doctor.
Hi.
Are people that are on your neck?
I can't speak to him in private.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You know more than that.
Okay, can you hear me?
Wonderful.
All right.
Whoa.
Very kind of very good. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our second meeting of the month. There are only four items, no public carries. Unfortunately, the Knicks don't play tonight. Can't finish the notes.
Hold on, can we approve the March minutes?
Yes, dear.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes with March is received already.
I make a motion.
Have a motion, the second? One favor. One, two, three. Okay.
Oh, you go start with sunshine.
No, that's for sunshine.
Okay.
Shalley then, now Shalley Hotel. Who's represented? This is a very different application. Sort of a linear hotel, I never what to call it. Maybe you think we get on.
I'm Chris Dastian, the works engineering.
Do you need that turn?
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps did you put that over?
No, because it'll block the camera.
I want your staff. All right, leave it.
Is it better or worse?
I can see it.
Okay.
For us, I suppose, we're important enough. Okay, tell us what you got.
Yes, this is an expansion of the existing Masihuda complex right now. What we're looking to do is a three-phased approach. They're looking to put in up to fifty-three units, eight bedrooms in each unit. Needs an advanced, this drawing actually is. Got a section comes out here. This comes out to the existing roadway and enters here with three units along the lower edge. It connects them through here.
When you say units, what do you mean?
These buildings are eight-bedroom units, they're hotel, it's like a bungalow.
Well, they're bungalows, hotel, but we're doing it like a family style, that people could have a whole unit. Because no one wants to be in a building, as I explained a few times, they don't want to be in a building with other people.
Sir, can you just state your name for the recording?
Do a rain loading.
Now, I'm not sure, what's the interior of the unit about? What does it have? Just bedrooms or?
Yeah, there's bedrooms and there's a sitting area and a kitchenette.
Okay.
Okay.
Does it have, you have some, some of them have four inside, right?
Some, they have eight bedrooms each unit, some will be four bedrooms and some will be two bedrooms.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out how this connects to the word hotel.
Well, the hotel itself is not really a hotel, it's old thing that was started in nineteen fifty. Building by building, they're very old, no one's coming anymore. And, you know, as I mentioned to a work session before, people are not even going to a big building anymore when they want to be on vacation, especially if they're coming with kids, you want to hear your kids, it's fair enough, you don't want to hear the other guy's kids. So therefore, we are doing little units, you know, smaller units of people who come, one family or two families together, be able to spend a weekend or a week together and enjoy themselves.
Will you be using the tiny room or the other part?
We have both options.
Good. Do you have a model with a floor plan?
We did not do it yet, I do have, I can give you a floor plan, show you what it looks like, I do not. Just that because we didn't get that far first, we're trying to get the concept out, but there's no time getting a floor plan. I have a zone.
Roughly, what is the square footage of these buildings?
Each building should be approximately
Fifty-two by fifty-six.
Fifty-two by fifty-six about. It's about twenty-five hundred square feet. Split into two, one to quads.
Two floors, three floors?
One floor.
One floor flat?
One floor flat.
Not flat roofs, pitch roofs?
Pitch, yeah. I want it to look nice.
Okay, I don't blame you. You're making a right investment, you want to make sure you can get.
If that's all we do, we want to do it slow, to see how it works, it's a new concept. Well, do it slow, see how it works. Maybe we could expand on that.
Well, there's, there's three listings on the hotel. There's hotel itself and facility, offering transient and lodging combination of general public based on daily service fee, which may include facilities and services such as restaurants, meeting rooms, entertainment, personal services and recreation facilities. And this hotel extended stay, facility with rooms with at least four hundred and twenty-five square foot with refrigerators, rooftops, microwave ovens, et cetera. Stay not to exceed fourteen days. This hotel resort, one of more buildings in which there are rental rooms for vacation and recreation purposes with common dining rooms, facilities such as indoor and outdoor recreation, supporting retail shops and services, staff housing and maintenance. So which one is it?
I believe it was resort hotel is what we had classified.
Arthur, we've gone through this quite a bit, I have a memo dating back to twenty twenty where there were questions about the.
Right, I know we questioned it.
Yep, so it's a, it's resort hotel. The extended stay hotel is defined, but it's not listed in the bulk table anywhere, so we treat it the same here as resort hotel anyway. But it most closely fits the definition, I mean, it is what was traditionally a resort hotel. Again, the key is one or more buildings in which there are rental rooms. So it could be one big main hotel building, or it could be several smaller hotel buildings. The key is that there are, you know, rooms to rent on a transient basis, they're not intended to be seasonal dwellings where people are going to stay all summer long, they're, you know, they're meant to be, you know, short, you know, short stays of a couple of days.
Right, we did that up to, then rural hotel.
But I thought it's the same thing.
Okay. I think that was before my time, but.
So what is it, like seven days stay max or two weeks?
Two weeks, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the compartment of health, I think it's something like, is it thirty days? And there's something to do with also like more than eleven people for, you know, less than thirty days, I think is the definition, so.
And what other parameters? Say if you're, you're planning on two weeks' stay and all of a sudden you want to change it to a month. Does it make a difference?
Well, the zoning, the zoning definition is as a, is as a transient rental. So in order to be able to fit the definition under the zoning code, it would have to be for short-term stays.
What is the sewer water situation?
Currently, you've got your sewer district, the limits of the sewer district are this line right here. We've got some units in there, the existing complex is over here right now. The water district is this line that runs down and through here. So we've got some buildings in the water district, but not in the sewer. We've got some in the sewer, but not in the water. And we've got nothing right now of this proposed development that's in book. That was one of the questions that we were trying to get cleared up with the engineer was, if we've got existing sewer and water in here right now, can we expand for the phase one development and tie into municipal sewer and water for this fourth portion of development? Obviously, once we get over into this area, we're getting outside of both districts and we're most likely going to have to deal with some onsite package plant for sewer and possibly wells for water. We are interested in seeing if we can get this portion of it tied into municipal water and sewer. This is twelve units in here, which would consist of ninety-six rooms and have proposed water and sewer usage of about a little over ten thousand gallons of water per day.
So I think if that triggers heating effect. Because I think anything that, that triggers goes like the Fug seven fifty review, if you can see. South Falls goes out of capacity. I can't speak to the water capacity, but sewer capacity, even, even at what we're talking about, there's no sewer capacity for that. And I think I would like Dylan to weigh in because I, I think it was either a work session or a meeting. From a seeker standpoint, we can't just look at, you know, the phase one, we have to look at the entire, you know, sort of project, you can't take it sort of by itself. So if there's no, you know, water and sewer, there's traffic, there's other issues, we have to look at it in its totality. So I'm not sure how we would be able to proceed with just approving, you know, phase one, those first four units without who we seek around the whole thing, and it is a tough one actually.
The whole thing is a tough one.
The whole thing is a tough one.
Suppose they just came in with phase one and dropped the rest. As far as the applications.
Again, I would, I would like Dylan to weigh in at some point because, you know, from a segmentation perspective, once the cat's out of the bag, the cat's out of the bag. If the intention is to do a larger development and you're saying this is phase one of the larger development, you can't just forget that the rest of it exists and say, okay, you know, now, now we just want to do the four, we don't want to do the rest of it. But again, I'm not an attorney, so I'd rather have to, you know, give an official recommendation as to how to proceed from an environmental review person.
Yeah, we would have to develop the infrastructure and everything, proposed infrastructure for the entire development. Whether it was implemented at that point, we'd have to get approval for the whole thing, but we could implement just in phases. And I think that was, the proposal was to implement phases to see how the first phase was perceived. If it was economically feasible to move to the second phase, then we could do that, otherwise we could consider.
Have you already hit the dynamics of figuring out what it would cost to do a sewer package plant?
We got some initial numbers, it's quite, it's quite expensive. I think the first point that we looked at was hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right now, the entire complex is on the property, you know, on the block.
No, it's on town water and sewer. That's part of the issue.
Okay, gotcha.
Part of the issue is that we will be taking out the old buildings and we want status for those buildings. We do buildings or they did say that, you know, everything is just town water and sewer this big, they constantly give us. So I'm at a risk, we will be.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't you supposed to get Ken the flows and then who's going to write his recommendation sheet down board on that?
I got Ken the flows, I have that in my bag.
So it would be a trade-off in other words, to be able to flow from the buildings that you're demolishing and taking out, use them to be a wash for, for the, at least the first four.
Part of it, I mean, well, we weren't asking for some availability in the, what's in the water and sewer, because we're asking for additional.
And there would be a hundred percent coming out and then going back.
Gotcha.
We'd have a portion coming out, a smaller portion coming out than a larger portion like that, but it would be a full ten thousand.
So it seems to me like the two main issues is Ken's going to have to weigh in on the infrastructure capacity issue and then Dylan's going to have to weigh in on the seeker or segmentation issue. But in the meantime, you know, if the board wants to talk about things like, you know, general layout, access, you know, those kinds of things, just to, you know, give some feedback to be able to come back would be fine.
Number one, was he involved? We're so far from being able to do it, I'm not sure that's far as it could be. And the whole thing is, is up there or is it still worth?
We have developed at least a layout for the proposed sewer and water within the site. Obviously, we have to find the source of the water and leak from the sewer. What we, what I've done is I've gone through and at least developed a collection system to collect from all these units here. This is a high point here, so there's kind of filter that's out, everything would kind of go out, come around, it would come down into here at the collection point. Right now, the water and sewer connection is generally down in this vicinity here, down the road. The way the system is set up, the proposed system is set up, we can branch off of that and take all the flow to our onsite package plant. If we're permitted to connect into it, we could connect into the municipal system down here as well. So we have developed at least a preliminary layout for a collection system. The water system is pretty much parallel to that. We would have to obviously have tanks onsite to collect to a supportive water can, probably pressurize it to get it into the system if we're on our own.
Pretty big project.
Yes, it is a sizable project.
Have you done a waters study?
No, we haven't gone that far yet. There are wells onsite, but we, we expect we'd have to.
If I remember correctly, the road coming in is in good shape either, so.
Well, the road that we've got.
An existing road.
The town road comes up through to this point, Shalley Bin Road goes off this point here. This is the end of the, of the road here, the town road. What we're doing is we're proposing an entrance coming in off the town road that will loop back in through here and connect back into the site and bring us back down to the existing action down here onto the town road. So this actually moves through the site.
Can the town road be attached?
Yes, I think that is.
Well, Chester's.
Well, that's Chester's.
Where'd that come off?
Yes, everything comes off Chester, so it's looped in there. We got the cul-de-sac, it was a cul-de-sac before, we did a hammerhead for the fire engine access to turn around action here. But everything else loops around, so we don't need any access for emergency vehicles as we're now. Obviously, it comes down into this location down here, but.
How wide is this road?
They're set up right now for twenty-foot. Obviously, we're looking at ten foot, at least a ten-foot lane.
If you build a swath, how many units will be coming to the, to down the old hotel?
That all depends on what units get traded out. If we're trading out units, these old units for new units, you know, how many units will be coming out? That's heavily determined at this point, which is.
I determine whatever, it's all, you talk about all the units coming out eventually because the water is very old.
You had mentioned going back to get the sewer.
Right.
I'm just asking, how many units could fit in there?
Oh, whatever Ken will come in. That's why you say it's back from Ken, you gave him the water flow. But when you get back, what we have to give up in order to get these new units?
What was the, what was the capacity in a hotel, hotels, anybody know? How many people that, when it was up running as a hotel, how many people could be accommodated?
We could accommodate to three hundred, three hundred and fifty people, I think we accommodated.
Until we get those questions answered, there's no way for us. I mean, it's nice to see it, it's an ambitious plan, but the sewer and water is, that's got to be settled down, there's no, no sense spending time and money on it until you know what to do with the secret.
Yeah, I mean, the only other alternative is to go through part two of EAF, you know, and you guys can pause deck it and then you can have them do all the evaluation of the different scenarios, public water, sewer, private.
We're so far from having capacity that it seems to me to be a waste of money. Sure money. But we saw the secret, there's going to be all kinds of questions. We're spending a lot of money.
The main question is, are they, are they willing to give us potato on the old, the new, that's always the main question.
If we pull out.
Which is a simple question, I don't think it has anything to do with secrets.
Well, but this, the, the planning board can't make a decision on the overall site plan, you know, just looking at those, you know, twelve units, you know, sort of whatever. So the two fundamental questions are, is there water and sewer capacity, even if the town allows you to do a trade-off of the old buildings versus the new? The, the planning board is obligated under secret to look at the entire, you know, big picture, not just, you know, the phase one.
And we need to know, you know, if we can get the trade-off in phase one, that kind of dictates how big a plant we need for phases two and three.
Right.
So we need to know how, how big a plant.
One of the things is you're going to have to find out if they will allow you to go out of the districts, water and sewer. Otherwise, you're, you're wasting your time, even if you're. So you're waiting for Ken on this. There's nothing more we can do.
So phase one was the buildings one, two, three and four, was that correct?
One, two, three and four, and then there's, there's five, five through, it's actually one, two, it's twelve. Yeah, I think I have it numbered correctly. It's one to twelve. One to twelve is phase one.
And some of those do lie outside of, of the water and sewer district?
There's nothing that lies in both districts, there's some that lie in water, there's some that lie in sewer. It'd be nice if the, if the districts were concurrent, but they're not.
Exactly, yeah, it's, it's a little bit confusing just because of the match line.
The biggest thing is, is the research on your investment. Question to the board is, if they could do it, it would be our, our best.
That's the main question.
Better than the others.
Before we do any more work, you know, we want to do this new concept, we want to do the whole thing. You know, they said they can't do it as a part because I did say that I do have future plans, I'm not going to want anybody. The question is, we're trying just to start up with phase one as water and sewer is concerned and okay to build. And then we can take it from there, if it doesn't work out, no, it's not worth it, we won't build it, we'll be left with the hotel as it was with a few new units. They'll be taking out some of the units and, you know, just live with what we have.
We still need to do stormwater design for that, so if we're going to be doing compartment-like stormwater design, we'd obviously deal with stormwater for phases one, phases two and phases three. That way, if things did not progress, at least the phase that was constructed had its own stormwater treatment system and vice versa coming down through the, these other phases. Rather than having one single consolidated stormwater facility to deal with all three phases.
Yeah. It'd be so much easier if you started this small, now you've got the whole thing on the table.
I'm not going to like anybody.
He's being honest by doing that, but the thing is, is you got to discuss with the authorities if you can be brought in. Town engineer. Water and sewer district, and who determines that? The town board?
Yes, the town board.
So. We should just concentrate on that, the design. We can live with it, we can change to fit our own notions of it. But the, the big factor is obviously the sewer. And there's nothing more we can do on this speculation.
Do you, have you ever done a, like a cost benefit analysis of the, you know, waiting until there's capacity in extending the district versus doing your own private, you know?
No, but you're talking about twenty twenty, which, you know, where time. Time, I'm not going to bother with it. So you might be going to wait in the old buildings, it doesn't make sense, then wait, like you go in for, you know, extensions and then you just mess everything up in the future. Yeah, I do have other options, I'm trying to do the most normal option that you could do. And I've been very open with everybody, telling exactly what plans are.
Yep.
You know, don't knock down the old buildings, there's a new hotel building that don't really work anymore, doesn't make sense.
Right.
Is this not going to be the hall, the hall piece with the Shalley Bin, is it going to still be one piece or is this going to be separate?
No, well, one piece, house expansion on the hotel.
Look, there's no sense of going through design. So we, we get a little further along, the real, real issue of sewer water, once we get that, if we get that taken care of, we can work with it. Once it's in the sewer water district, we can find a way.
Okay, so let's say we don't get water and sewer.
Let's talk about that option. And you're going to be, you're going to help the farmer and the DEC, and you're going to be a long time, not that you can't do it. They'll let you do the project if you got water and sewer, no, there's no question they'll let you do it.
You can do it with compartment health on water source.
But you'll be a long time.
As well, as well, it's all bad, you know, capacity, whether they can produce that amount of water, we're also looking at dealing with the DEC for review of the, the package plant, so we're obviously looking at a large package plant out there. So the package plants we were looking at were compartment, they were units, so you could get a unit that would go up to about thirty thousand GD. So you could add on, so we could do it in pieces. The first phase obviously would have, the initial unit would be over capacity for phase one, might be slightly under capacity for phases one and two. So we're still looking at other options for the package plants as well, there are technologies out there.
Was it pure stream, any chance it was on ZI or a can?
No, we were looking at H2O, it's a silo, basically it's a vertical system, fewer, fewer moving parts, easier to maintain.
You're in the never sink watershed, you're looking at some. Did you get preliminary effort limits from the DEC? Because you're probably going to end up having to do nutrient removals, that part here.
No, we haven't gone that far yet, so we haven't, we've only explored, you know, options for treatment plants, we haven't gotten into all the details, so.
Because that.
Obviously, people that have forward disease.
I was going to say that, that usually will drive type of package plant for me, and just from based on experience in the Delaware River basin, DEC is requiring nutrient removal, so that'll, that'll affect. But you can get preliminary limits from the DEC just to do, you know, certain.
These new package plants, what are the, what are the life expectancy of these boards?
We haven't really got into that, they're maintainable, you know, if they're used for seasonal purposes or for, for full year-round use as well. So I'm not sure what life on a, on a package plants are.
So I would, I would say go further along the pathway in the sewer water, what we spent a lot of time on. I mean, this, this makes no sense for us to play with design right now.
No, we're, we're kind of in an hazy area with the overlapping districts there and trying to trade out existing units, new units and things like that. It's not just a, a simple, you know, we got this, we're outside, we're inside, we just want to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there's a way, you know, if you can get a little bit more clarity on, you know, if you could eliminate units and then, you know, get, so that you don't have to deal with kind of the big picture, then we can check with Dylan and see whether or not you can, you know, withdraw this application for the larger and just, you know, go with the smaller. But that would be up to him to decide, but that sounds like kind of the, the only path forward, you know, without, like you said, building out all the infrastructure, doing all your own private infrastructure, if there's an interim step that's really kind of in the, in the way to go.
Our, our goal was to try to build each phase as a standalone that we could just build off of. So each one would build up, each subsequent phase would have all the capabilities that needed within its phase.
I guess that's a little work we do in design, that's the easy part.
We need to get some answers from the engineer and from the towns.
I'll reach out to Ken tomorrow.
I understand, I, I know, I just sent him an email to, I'm, yeah, I left a message for him as well.
He got back today, so. Well, I think it's amazing with big vision, we're always spending all the money going with all the visions of the sewer and water plant, eventually we'll get them needed. There's, there's no way to avoid it, the town is not in the capacity only. So the question is, you know, on the bigger picture, what's their feeling about going in? That's what we really need to know, to do is two phases, one was phase one, and then we also enter the bigger picture before we put all the money in engineering and work for the sewer. So if we can't enter phase one, let's talk about the bigger picture.
If you're talking about the bigger picture, to what purpose right now? Yeah, talk, you should have a meeting with the town board, the town engineer and see what the town is, if, if anything, the town is wanting to do with the, with the situation in the front and then maybe a little better. Do you want, well, can you do a smaller one? Or just either got to go your own way and it take what, two years, at least two years? Well, you know, well, you're right, when's, when's the town water and sewer capacity going to be, to come back? It's going to, it's going to be years.
For what, town water and sewer?
No, we're going to have to go with this old sewer plant. That's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get answers on how, you know, what you give us that we should, you know, work on those sewer plants.
I would say, Arthur, with the larger picture, again, just speaking from a seeker perspective, we're going to notice a lot of issues with traffic in Woodburn, so I think, you know, that's something that, you know, you'll, you'll have to look at, I don't know if you have a traffic.
Traffic engineer.
Yeah, traffic engineer, you know, maybe not a full-blown traffic study at this point, but it just, you know, at least some sort of cursory evaluation of what kind of traffic impacts you're looking at, you know, for this, you know, size development. Especially going into the season, if you need to do updated, you know, traffic counts or anything like that, it's, it's a good time.
We can propose that forward with the phasing and the full build-out, against the traffic impact statement on that.
Yep. So traffic, storm, the usual, traffic, storm water, water, sewer, right, you'll have to have a hydrology report for the water system.
Yeah, once, once we solve the first question, the sewer water, then we can go to work on it. But I, why would you want to put money into it right now when you're, you're, your chances of getting it done are pretty iffy? You can if you're money.
Change the game what then?
Can the sewer water change over into town?
Well, then we look at, at providing our own water and sewer.
Yeah, once you answer that question, then we can do the secret because the secret is going to depend on sewer water and the other normal stuff. I would try to get that done first, before you get too far into it.
We'll get together with Ken.
We're not exactly to it, we're not saying we, we don't like it, we're not giving an opinion on it. We're, we're being realistic. As far as getting the, getting the important thing done, this proper, this, this sewer water. Once you've done that, we go to the secret, we get, we do the whole process.
We have to the secret anyhow, with phase two and three.
Right.
So why don't we just move along with that?
Because it's either going to be secret for your own wells or our system, so it's going to be two. Because it's either going to be seeker for your own wells or our town system. So it's going to be two separate seeker processes.
And I guess not to, uh, not to throw another monkey wrench in, but the long form E A F looks like there was something flagged with archaeological sites. So you might want to just check with.
With Chipo.
With Chipo and see what exactly that is and, you know, maybe you have some mapping or something that might not be an issue, but it did flag it.
Yeah, it's a large parcel. So the area I think that we're in, I don't think we're, we're in that bubble.
Right.
When we run the, when we run the E A F.
Yeah, do our mapping properly. So yeah, we have to at least investigate. So.
We're, we're not capable of working with you. Works yourself that problem.
No, but we're working on it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Ken. Thank you.
For discovery. We folks have been very patient. You sat here with this whole thing the other night. Here we are.
You're hoping you guys will break that clock.
None of that anyway. So Sean, just see if you guys see the background. Um, thanks, Mr. Cameron. Glenn Smith for Center for Discovery. Katelyn Haas from Cala Dispense here also from the center. And this project is the Hurleville Farming. Our center in Hurleville, we had a public hearing last meeting, as you recall, on the proposal basically to relocate the dance studios from the first floor of the building to, to twenty two Main Street across the street. And basically install three classrooms, roughly got six, maximum six kids per classroom, and a, um, and a fitness room for staff and for clients in the back of the building. It's in the Amex zoning district. Helen was kind enough to do a memo as a new entity. That's what you're seeing now on her, basically the board asked you to do a zoning review of the project. I'm pushing a report on that. But I think it's a building on the vision that instead of theater, a theater building is defined by the town zoning code. And because it's got a theater and the ballrooms and, and the former art center, and these, uh, the dance studio is actually accessory use to it. The restaurant, the cafe, I should say, is accessory use to the primary use of the theater. And basically, uh, we don't need any special use permit for this. It falls under permitted uses, subject to planning board review and zoning. And that's kind of where we are, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, we remember like surprise with the building turned out to be, what we proposed, that's water under the bridge. I can't see doing part of the building. We have to locate the whole thing. We can't just do one section of.
What do you mean?
The, uh, the, the theater was done without permit.
What are you talking about?
When we approved the building, there was no, the theater was not part of the approval.
It was approved as dance studios and.
Dance studios.
No, let me finish. The site plan resolution said that the use was described as a dance studio and performance center. So I would take performance center, even though it said performance center, if you look at the definition in the zoning code, um, it matches, you know, a building or part of a building used to show motion pictures or for drama, dance, musical, or other live performances. So to me, from a zoning perspective, it clearly fits the definition of a theater. That should be the principal use. And then any of the other stuff that's either existing or proposed, as long as it is a legitimate, you know, typical ancillary accessory use, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be an issue. So I have viewed theater as the principal use because it takes up like seventy five percent of the building is the theater.
So in your view, we okayed.
I'm sorry?
The, the theater fits under what we approved.
Yes, yes. And I think both the classrooms and the dance studio would be considered acceptable accessory use. So.
Fine. Taking care, I just want, I want to make sure it's covered.
Yeah.
That's up to discussion.
Because it was, it was ambiguous. So, you know, from here on forward.
The word theater wasn't in your approval.
Right, exactly.
Commercial theater was not.
I agree. It wasn't, it wasn't the word, that word wasn't in approvals.
We talked about parking and other things, but it's come, it's cooperating, it's working well.
And Glenn has updated the plans to show the bulk table has been updated, that the principal use is theater with all of the bulk requirements for that. And then all the other, you know, sort of ancillary uses would be considered accessory uses to the theater.
We don't have to go with that. That's all I want to know.
Okay, sounds good. You don't have an issue with the classrooms being an accessory use then? Because that's basically what they're asking for.
No, performance center fits, fits under that broad definition. I don't see, does anybody on the board see a problem with that? I think the biggest problem is the building you're moving to. We asked it. Dance was not comfortable with the building to go with the construction occasionally.
Well, again, it's two, that's not the application before you. The application before you is to work the dance studios into classrooms. Where the dance studio ends up going, if they plan to relocate, is a, is a different application unless, unless I'm mistaken, but.
No, that's correct. And we would follow the process through client. And we, I've already discussed with T J having the building, that you two evaluate the, the capacity of the load of dancing on the main floor to ensure that it's a space that is appropriate space for the dance studios to move into. And then we'll follow the application process of that site as well.
So when we made the change, is there a group using the dance studio for another next month or two?
Yes. So they're tenants. Um, right now, because they would be New York State Education Department approved classrooms, we have a current application with them. Um, we wouldn't be able to move forward, even if the planning board were to give it to, uh, you guys were, to get the approval this evening, we have to, we proceeded to approve our architectural plans before they will issue, will, will grant us the ability to start. So it's not looking like, even if everything happens instantaneously for all the approvals, that we wouldn't start construction until, um, June. And that would be after the recital time that the, the, the dance studio has requested, if we could delay until the point that they'd be able to still use it.
So they'll be able to finish, finish up their.
Finish out their space in. And then, but they still would have access to the performance space in, at H pack, regardless of where their, um, the studio space is located. They would still be able to access the ballroom. That's where they do a lot of their recitals.
Okay.
Is that what you're, we can share?
Is the classroom to school?
Oh, yeah.
Classroom to school?
Yes. It's a, a component. We have a, um, it's called a non-public day school. It's an eight fifty three classification under New York State Education Department. Um, currently, we have capacity for a hundred and seventy eight community students. That's okay. Move up, that's easier. Um, so it would be.
Controlled by the bar, the state of New York.
Correct. Yes. They would be certified by State Education Department. They would be evaluated annually by State Education Department. Um, the plans are under evaluation by State Education Department. They'd be fully approved classrooms. And then the students are placed from local districts. We have an extensive waiting list for our community school. It's about over a hundred students that are, are looking to come in. This, three classrooms would serve eighteen students.
Mm hmm.
So parking, the bus and getting in and out, if you're going to have, oh, a hundred students.
No, just eighteen, eighteen in this location.
Does they have a waiting list of a hundred?
Yeah. Again, this is the Center for Discovery. They have these programs spread out all throughout different facilities.
Yes, we have another school building in, um, Hurleville that's at the big barn that has seven classrooms. So that's forty two students.
So these are your typical residential, sort of, I mean, not residential, but the, the classroom instruction for folks with, um, developments or disabilities currently?
Yes, all of the students, um, so students are referred by local districts. Um, all of our classrooms are the same classroom ratio. So it's six students, one special education teacher, three dedicated teaching assistants, and someone that's shared amongst the few different classrooms. And the clinical services are pushed into the learning environment. So T P T, speech, behavioral services, vision services, all happen within the context of learning environment. So we have a bus plan. It utilizes similarly to what H pack does for some of their educational, um, things that happen. There's a drop off under the awning, and then we have the large municipal lot where the buses can wait for students.
Of course, this is similar. Be a type two seeker, we wouldn't have to do anything.
No, it's, it's basically just a, a, a change of use and it's an accessory use at that. It's not any physical alteration to the exterior of the building.
Right, so it should be a very simple process. Do you have a question, Paul?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you have the five classrooms. Do you have any other options for other, to take it into the, to other places if this doesn't get approved?
Three classrooms.
It's three classrooms. Um, at this juncture, no. We did open the specialty hospital, which was in Rock Hill. All those classrooms, there's seven classrooms in that building. They're all utilized. Um, and were maximized on our other campuses. That's why we're doing an expansion of the capacity of the program. Concurrently would be the different classroom spaces to be used.
If you have three classrooms, and two years from now, are you planning on expanding at this building?
Not at this building. This, this would maximize what we can do on that location.
No room.
Without taking away the, the theater and performing space, which is the principal use.
I, I always like to say that, um, if something comes up, that you have other options and, um.
Okay, as far as the special use permit is concerned, can you think of any special conditions possibly?
No, now that we've classified, yeah, well, that was because I think it was ambiguous what the use was approved for. The theater use in that zoning is, is a permitted use. So, um, it's not subject to a special permit. So.
Okay, so we're really talking about the classrooms.
Exactly.
Uh, change of use. I don't see it as much. On the board, I haven't heard the question. I don't have a big problem with it. Changing it over to schools, classrooms, no big deal. Uh, will we make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
We're not waiting for that. Okay, Quiet Road subdivision, request subdivision of property, does the same thing with the bodies, I'll enjoy it.
You got to save it from the last meeting.
The crowd went crazy.
Uh, good evening. Joel Corn, presenting this Quiet Road subdivisions. This is a six point seven, two eight acre pass on Quiet Road and Mountaindale. Uh, it's in the Amex zoning district within the water and sewer districts. And, uh, which, yeah, it's only district allowance for single family homes on half acre lots. These lots range from half an acre to one point nine acres. So this is just a little, simple subdivision, seven lots with a new load of all from Quiet Road with the cul-de-sac, which is about five hundred and fifty feet from Quiet Road.
Where, where's, where's the new house?
That's it? Yes, yes. So it's called where the tennis courts.
That is clear. Have you had a word? Do you have a walk back there?
There's a, there's a wetland all the way in the back. This is actually, there's, there's a stream, there's actually a stream there. Uh, so there will be a crossing for that, you know, for that stream, which obviously will be a priority for the D E C and I for.
What, what addition on the property right now?
So currently, there's a couple of old tennis courts. I'm not sure. I tried to, to ask people, you know, what the purpose, what was the purpose of those courts?
It was, it was, I know you, you. He was an instructor. He was a tennis pro, and he gave lessons there. Guy's name was Sid Moore. So he, he actually gave lessons there.
See, that's always filled in because that was all, that was all swamp. We used a hand trap, stitch in the, in the back up there. And it's very.
Yeah, it's very wet.
Very wet.
Right. The property was delineated, you know, the wetlands was delineated on the stream. Um, I mean, of course, we'll have to look for everything on that.
Yeah, but delineated now. We're all talking about, that was all swamp. It got filled in.
How many years ago?
Forty, forty or more.
Yes.
It's going to have to have a public hearing.
Your father, my father didn't work there. Won't work there.
You'll find out.
Wait, hold on. One conversation at a time, just because of the difficulty.
I have a lot of wood.
Yeah, I don't like that. Sorry. When?
Nobody's using this next time.
Is this? Joel, this depends on the town water and sewer or?
No.
Um, hold on, since you mentioned town water and sewer, Joel, are you aware that they did some damage to the sewer main and the curb box? And I guess they're refusing to pay the town for this repair and also the money that they earned gave, um.
So why are we?
No, not, not aware of it. But, um, we should be considering how I am aware.
If there's a violation, why are we?
Well, not a violation.
Not a violation if they're not.
This, I'm sure this will be worked out.
Yes.
Joel, I.
When they do this with the water and sewer.
Yes.
We can't stop that because of the non-acceptance of this water, right?
No, not necessarily. I mean, I was going to bring that up, um, because I, I understand that seven units is not a lot. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't approve a subdivision with private water and sewer unless you could demonstrate that the land could, you know, could purr. So by the same token, you, you wouldn't approve a seven lot subdivision on public water and sewer if there's no capacity. Um, so again, I, I know personally, because we're working on a, um, an evaluation of the Mountaindale place water shooting plant. Um, and that plant is, last time checked, at or exceeding um, capacity in the sum of its, it's, it has a violation order, you know, from the D E C that it basically, it, it needs a lot of work and it also has capacity.
They, they have to order a lot of water down in Mountaindale, but not sewer.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the water, but yeah.
Well, I know they have more water sewer.
Right.
I don't know if it's where exhibits are, but I don't know what it's for that yet.
So again, I can get together with Ken. We can take a, a fresh look at it. But the, the two big developments that went in in Mountaindale, um, was it Sapphire? The Mountakers? Yeah. Those two, which I don't think are a hundred percent online yet, where they are now? Um, but those two basically put the plant over capacity.
And what about the reusing project? Making a fifty thousand gallons a day going into the plant that we never discussed about that. Used to be a vegetarian hotel.
And wood.
The horse, the orange horse mane going to Mountaindale.
See, I know it as Camp Rossina, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're going way back.
But that.
The Terry is original.
I, I believe that's a separate issue that that applicant is working out with the, um, with the town board. So that's kind of happening on a parallel track. Right now, whatever sewage they were sending to Mountaindale, they're going to continue to do that. But as far as any expansion or, or anything that's being worked out with the town.
So between now and the next meeting, I guess we'll get together, um, you and Ken, and see what issues are with capacity and, uh, if this is something that's not going on.
And you're, you're going to do jurisdictional extranation if the D E C need time or you have it already or?
I, I don't have, I don't get anything back yet from D E C.
But you're.
What if you don't have it? I have forty ninety days, but, uh, I, I did this J D, but that's less than.
Because again, that's going to be my concern. Even if it comes back and they say, no, you know, it's not under our jurisdiction, you, you have a couple of the building envelopes that are like literally, you know, the boundary of the wetland is, is in the backyard. And we've talked about this before. Once people build a house and they see, you know, their backyard is, is wet, they just, you know, brain fill in and they, they don't know that, you know, it's part of a larger system.
I, I would recommend that they're going into that, that they should do soil testing, because I know the soil in the back.
Not good.
Not good. And it's.
Not good.
So if it needs to be, it needs to be addressed unless that is starting, I don't, from the, the road to your turnaround circle, how far back are you? Because you, you're showing where there are a turnaround and two houses after that is right, right within the wetland.
That's, uh, it's not within the wetlands. It's an upland. Uh, that is, that is five hundred and fifty feet from, uh, Quiet Road.
And they filled it into a wet through there.
We wanted it four years ago.
I'm just saying, we're just letting, he's just letting you know.
You couldn't have built this down nowadays.
Right. We're just letting you know that when you get into there, you're going to, they're going to find out.
I think that's a good recommendation for Paul. And, um, we'll look at it, um, you know, and do some soil testing.
You need to do that, do your damage.
Because his father and my father did a lot of work in the development there.
You, you from the.
No, we didn't fill it. A, a lot of water and sewer work was done there.
Yeah.
Well, you filled it in until.
The tennis court.
It was a lot of that.
It was.
No, I know.
I'm saying, uh, his father did the digging, my father did the water and sewer maintenance and stuff. I'm saying, his father did the digging, my father did the water and sewer mades and stuff like that.
Hey, isn't that a comment?
It's in the district, correct?
Yes.
So you don't need to do perk testing, because you can't have a private system.
I can't have a private system.
I don't know why you want soil testing.
Well, is that hurts something?
He was said soil testing.
Soil testing, structure, structure of the soil with the, with the groundwater. Very good.
Like a connection, right, before the hose was gonna...
Their, their foundation, the engineer who designs the homes will do a foundation design for the footing that's gonna meet the capacity of the soil, that's standard for all homes.
Was this part of the community park subdivision, or, you know, was it part that, that developed there, or?
Yes.
It was originally?
To a certain point, and then after that, there was separate fields from... What's the, what's, you're coming in on Silver Lake roadside.
Yep.
Coming, going in the back there. Once you get on the high side, it's very nice up there, but soon as you start down in this area.
But there weren't any restrictions or anything, that this was supposed to be open space for that development? Because we run into that before in other communities, where it's been like 40 years ago, and that was supposed to be left open, you've done the DBC.
I had a, I support that.
They were actually building on something that was already built on.
Okay.
Different use.
Gotcha.
There were, there were tennis courts in there. Yeah, there were multiple tennis courts here.
Right, exactly.
There was a, there was a, there was a small building there. There was a small building there.
Trailers.
Trailers, right.
Never, never bought.
But I'm saying, there was trailers there. So the tennis courts were trailers in there. Okay, because we didn't have business there.
After our experience in the two roads, you remember that one?
It's hard, it's hard to forget. That was a seven lot subdivision that agricultural zoning district.
That was one where we had to rewrite. The box. The reason I mentioned public hearing, and I realize now that I've been reading, this is just a concept. So it's pretty true for that, but I'd like to get, find out if there's going to be public controversy on this, really, if I can.
Probably won't be.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is...
It would be amateur, huh?
I mean, this is in the Arizona District, not an agricultural, and the one was. Where they did the cluster subdivision, I think a lot of the tenants didn't understand the concept of clustering. I think this project is ready for a public hearing.
It's grounded housing development, right, that's the hell of a thing.
Yeah. It's all, it's all with...
It's all housing.
It's all houses, yeah.
I don't know about the, the back, because if you have to have an above-ground septic system for those houses.
It's not, it's not a septic system, it's in the town ward.
So town ward, so?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to get that...
Can we get a public hearing scheduled for the, for June meeting?
That's fair with me, I won't be the...
Everybody's leaning on you.
Yeah, I'll be there, as long as Helen's here, help me and a lawyer.
Yeah, I mean, council of water makes...
But Jen's not gonna put you on the agenda until you clean up your stuff with her.
It's fine, I don't, I don't think that's, that's... Yeah, a public hearing is scheduled for June.
Oh, Arthur, this is new business, do you want to engage anybody?
I would actually, well, I can do the right collection.
Engage any consultants, or are you just gonna kind of go solo?
Sure, come on in.
I'm assuming he's still in there, is that right?
He's not around, huh?
You don't, you have the public hearing, you'll find out if anybody in that development up the hill cares.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
You won't care about it.
All right, so we're, we're on our way.
Thank you.
You just sleep it around.
Okay. Prime Minister subdivision, request subdivision property of the four single-family home lot, Town R, acreage 43, Western Water Avenue, does that sound a bit...
So, I'm gonna name Joel Cornet for this Prime Minister subdivision. So this is a 43 acre parcel on Laurel Avenue. It's, it surrounds Laurel Estates. It's in the Arizona District, it requires half acre minimum lots. So proposing a four lot subdivision, basically cutting out two half acre lots and one, one and a half acre lots. Yeah, and a portion of this property is in the Water and Sewer District. The back portion of the property is not put in the Water and Sewer District, but right now, we're just, this is just a four lot subdivision, cutting out three lots in front.
What's the terrain like there?
It goes, it goes downhill from Laurel, it drops all the way to...
Little bit? It feels a little, little bit?
It is a little bit. We can have, we can have the survey and the countable there.
You're not planning to build, you're just selling the lots?
He might want to build one house and then sell two lots.
Right, it's not a building looking at...
This is just a single-family home. It's not a building, no.
Okay, so if it's basically locked, then you don't have to worry about that.
So if... My board would consider scheduling a public hearing for the meeting as well?
Especially you're not, you're not doing it, you don't need to check on sewer, yeah, public hearing. Helen, would you like to be involved in this?
Um, that is entirely due, it's a straightforward...
We always like it, we're really interested.
She'll lose the food, that's why.
Would you bring Helen?
I would, sure.
Thank you. Favorite?
Thank you.
Who's the motion in the second?
I will make the motion, third meeting, second.
Don't wait, guys, we have more work to do. No, we have to clean up some of the mess from last one.
We're gonna do, you may do this, because you've got the microphone.
I didn't have the microphone then.
That's the reason you may do this.
It's all Arthur's fault.
See? Helen, no.
Fire me, what are you trying to do?
No, you want it too bad.
All right, Harvey, I'm sunshine, we, we reconfirm the motion for negative tech. Harvey, is it not getting in the minutes? Ken?
I think the problem...
No, the problem is the lead agency.
Yeah, so you guys did a negative...
We couldn't do a negative tech in PWA.
Well, the, the problem was that you guys elected not to do a coordinated review. It was a small enough project, but there was so much time that elapsed between the, the first appearance and the, you know, the, when the decision was made. So you just basically need to...
Motion.
Motion to declare yourselves a lead agency and reaffirm the negative declaration from the last meeting.
Okay, we can do that.
Two separate resolutions, if you don't mind.
Okay, motion to take the lead agency status upwards to that.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? And second, motion for negative tech.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Favorite?
All right.
So do we clean up the mess now?
And then just reconfirm the approval.
Last motion?
Next motion.
What are we there?
Re, reaffirming the approval, because technically you couldn't do the approval before the agency.
You really messed that one up, didn't you? All right, motion for approval?
I made the motion.
With engineer review before signature? Motion?
I made the motion, somebody else seconded it.
Second?
I'm giving.
All in favor?
You know, Ellen's not here, so, you know, that's, that's what I'm obviously, I told her not to come.
I couldn't see him coming.
I know.
That's how all meetings should be.
We're dreaming.
Oh, where's your thing? I didn't put your thing out. No, you didn't bring it.
You gambled. We took it away from, because he...